Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the Racial Equity and Policing Commission meeting on Thursday, March 14. I call this meeting to order at 5:30, 6:00 P.M. And we will start with roll call of the commissioners, followed by city staff. So all of the commissioners online. We'll start with Commissioner Raymundo, just say your name. That's it.
Chloe Raymundo.
Katie Duranty.
Ulbia Guadarrama.
Jason Wessel.
And we'll go to the commissioners in the room.
Detriya Taylor.
Jason Inahosa.
Rodrigo Fernandez.
Heather Streetfellow.
Dia Unmin.
Okay, and then now we're moving into city staff. Michelle Mooney, Equity Manager, Salt Lake City Mayor's Office.
Maria Ramirez, Executive Assistant.
Ian Frederick, Park Ranger Program Director.
Mike Brown, Chief Police.
L. Smith, Executive Assistant to the Chief.
Danny Joy, Chief Equity Officer.
And then we'll end with you, Parman.
Parman Bailey, Deputy Director, Public Lands.
Okay. Thank you all. So I want to welcome, I believe, all of the commissioners and new commissioners are here. There should be seven of you all. We might be missing just one. But I know people are still trickling in, so I want to formally welcome you all. This truly makes me so happy to see that we are now running out of full commission, fifteen members. And Commissioner Calvert, really quickly, can you just say your name for the record?
Yeah, this is Steve Calvert.
Okay, perfect.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. So I will have the new commissioners go around and just let us know your name. Well, you already told your name, so kind of your background. And that can be anything from where you were to why you were interested in the commission. We're going to just do brief introductions.
Okay, well, again, I'm Detriya Taylor. My background is basically when I went to college to get my sociology degree, I did an internship with the Orange County, what do they call it? It was their, uh, Orange County Human Relations, and they had a hate crime commission. And I interned there and learned a lot about how to moderate a public dialogue between civilians and the police department. But aside from that, I was living in L.A. when the Rodney King riots happened. I was living in L.A. when everything blew over with George Floyd. And all I know is when people started to come against the police, I didn't think those were the right answers, and I just wanted a voice. So when I saw this commission here, I thought, okay, this is an opportunity.
Most of my background is in law enforcement. I've retired once already. I went to the private sector. I worked for a company called Williams, where the largest part of my duties as a regional security and public safety professional was assisting HR, human relations, and employee investigations. And a large part of those were shockingly racial bias and sexual harassment. Honestly, to a degree, I didn't even know it existed in the workplace, but it still does. I did that for about eighteen months. A job came open with the University of Utah after the McCluskey homicide, and I was compelled to put my name and I had to see what I could do to help. Little did I know that it would be the most stressful three years of my working life, because the university is a very dynamic and very challenging environment, but it's also the most diverse climate I've ever worked in. So it really inspired me to start learning more about my job and what it means to serve the community. So up until this point, I developed pretty strong relationships with quite a few faculty and staff members. I'm on the Staff Council on the EDI Commission or the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Who knows what that's going to be called, what it looks like in July? Then I also serve Staff Council as an advisory member to the Faculty Senate on Equity Diversity and Inclusion. So just kind of what I've learned at the university and then some life experiences I've had in law enforcement, I thought I could contribute to the commission to help policing evolve and become better. And then hopefully also learn more to take back to the university. So kind of a two-way thing for me. I'd really like to learn more, but I think I've got some experiences, I said, some insight that I think I can contribute to.
My name's Rodrigo. I don't have such an extensive background. I'm a freshman at the University of Utah studying political science and minoring in Human Rights and Resources. I had a friend who was on the commission, Julia. She just told me about all the great work that you guys do, and I really wanted to come, learn, and help in any way that I can. I was on U.C. Government here, and that was a great experience. And yeah, I'm just here to learn and help in any way that I can. And yeah, just serve the community.
Thank you. So Heather Streetfellow, and I currently work at Westminster University, but I started my professional career coming out of the University of Utah, being a police officer and a detective with Salt Lake City Police Department, and worked doing primarily sex crimes, violence investigations. After twelve years, I said, okay. Actually, the city helped pay for my master's degree, which is really helpful. And I moved to the Rape and Perjury Center and was the executive director for seven years, where I worked across the county to look at how we could change systems in terms of the approach to responding to crimes of sexual violence and making some systemic changes at the Rape and Perjury Center, working with law enforcement, taking my background in law enforcement. And then I was talked into working at Planned Parenthood, where I worked for almost ten years as their lobbyist, affecting policy, health policy, also working directly to sexual violence and working with the police department as well. And maybe something a little bit less exciting, I should say, after all of that work. It's all good stuff, and I guess it really speaks to what I'm an activist in my core, and I believe in social justice, I believe in equity, health equity. And so I'm Easy Street, Westminster University, doing a party planning, but I still have that interest in being involved and working with my community to do things better, because we have a lot of work we can be doing. And so this was a call to.
Thank you.
My name is Dia. I was actually on the commission previously, but I took a break last summer because I was offered an internship in the mayor's office. But I'm a high school senior at West High, and I get to interact with school resource officers on a daily basis and see how policing affects especially kids. So I think that's really interesting and something that I hope to share.
Thank you, and we'll start with our new commissioners online. So Chloe, I will have you go first.
All right, thank you. So I'm Chloe Raymundo. I was born and raised in Utah in a mixed Hispanic-Asian household. In my time in Utah Public Schools, I'm a junior in high school, I participated in a number of community-led initiatives, including the vaccination campaign at Spy Hop, the Salt Lake Health Department's Teen Advisory Board arranging the youth summits. I was a part of the Promising Youth Project, which I believe was an initiative started by this commission a few years prior, all of which bolstered my passion in diversity and equity.
Thank you, Chloe. And I know we have Alex. Alex is one of our new commissioners as well, joining us. Could you please just give us a brief introduction of yourself? This can be what you do for work or your background or why you were interested in the commission.
Hi, hi, everyone. I see a blurred image for the council room. I can see the other people in the room. I know. Online version, yeah. My name's Alex Van Diver. I'm a lawyer over at Parsons, Leland, Latimer. I'm a civil litigator, and I'm interested in being part of the commission because I have been a Utah citizen for as long as I can remember, and I want the best for our city. So nice to meet you all.
Thank you for being here. Briefly, did the other commissioners, I know the blur does not help, but I think most of the current commissioners are online anyways. So did you guys all just want to briefly introduce yourselves as well? And a brief background.
Hi, everyone, I'm Katie. I think I have a lot in common with a lot of you in the room. I'm traveling right now or else I'd be there in person. But I'm actually, I'm an Assistant Professor of Sociology and Criminology at the University of Utah, so I heard a lot of University of Utah in there. I heard a sociology major in there. So yeah, I'm excited to have you all, but that's my background. And yeah, as a criminologist, you might guess, I'm really passionate about criminal justice reform, particularly related to racial justice, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you. We'll go to Jason.
Hi.
You want me to go, or did you want to go there?
Doesn't matter to me.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Steve Calvert. I've been a citizen here in the Valley for thirty-three years. I have a background. I've been a single foster parent for thirty-three, I'm one on thirty-three years now, and I probably have raised probably, I probably have a fa, well, we've raised probably a hundred and twenty teenagers and adopted probably close to fifteen. Can you do my sixteenth one? I am also a court administrator for West Valley City, and I just want to be able to, hopefully, that can be some form of an impact upon the lives of the people, the citizens of Salt Lake City.
Thank you.
All right, now it's my turn. My name's Jason Wessel. I got a PhD in Middle East Studies at the University of Utah as well. My research was on social movements and the Arabs bring up, right? I just finished my second term on the Human Rights Commission, and I'm currently on the Rose Park Community Council and the West Side Coalition. So this board. I think that covers everything relevant that I can think of off the top of my head.
Thank you. And Obia, are you available to introduce yourself briefly?
Yeah, sorry, I'm Ulbia. I work with the Utah Law Vision Services for people that are losing their vision. And I joined the commission because I wanted to have my voice heard and make it, you know, so that we have more equal opportunities as individuals with different conditions in Salt Lake City.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we're going to move to our next agenda item, so open dialogue. So during this portion of the meeting, commissioners may raise topics and discuss current events that may impact or influence the commission's overall work, discussions, and deliberations to provide recommendations to the mayor and city council regarding the Salt Lake City Police Department's policies, budget, and culture. No action will be taken during this section of the meeting. Matters discussed during this section of the meeting may be scheduled on a subsequent agenda for follow-up. So with that, commissioners, do we have anything you want to raise here for open dialogue?
I just wanted to say, a couple of days ago, in my capacity on the West Side Coalition, I attended a meeting that Chief Brown was at, where community members were concerned about the increase in crime that's happening on the West Side, specifically along the Jordan River Trail and the North Temple Corridor. Two-hour meeting that I thought was very productive and a lot of people on the same page. The primary concern isn't people experiencing homelessness, but the kind of parasites that follow them, drug dealing and crime preying on that population. So anyways, I want to thank the chief and Salt Lake Police Department and representatives from the city and the county who attended to address the community concerns.
Thank you, Jason.
I know it's the first meeting. So we will be moving on to public comment, it looks like. So there is no guest from the public. So we will be moving forward from that item into the approval and adoption of the minutes for January 2024. So is there a motion on the floor to approve and adopt the January 2024 meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, Commissioner Calvert, is there a second?
I can second it.
Commissioner Duranty. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. If your cameras are off, please raise a virtual hand, because I want to be ethical about this and make sure we're counting your votes. Okay. And then I'm assuming, are all of you, did you all get to see the minutes?
Yeah, we go down the minutes when we're in the meeting.
I know, it's like, what would you think, Commissioner Wessel, on that one? I know it's tough, but it is quorum, so I'm sure that makes sense.
I'm sorry, I missed a question.
If the new commissioners abstained because they weren't at the meeting.
That's what I, that's what I've always done. I believe, for following by Robert's rules, if they abstain, their numbers don't count towards the final vote.
Okay.
So we have quorum. Their numbers don't count, so that you take the number of people who did vote it, and I imagine it carried unanimously. So you could just say it carried unanimously with X number of abstentions.
Okay, thank you. I'll work with Maria on that to make sure that's accurate. Okay, so next we'll move into the SLCPD chief update. So let me pull that up for you all. And the time is yours, chief.
Thank you, Michelle. And thank you. It's nice to see so many new faces at the table. And I have to say, Jason's a little bit humble in his introduction. He's, he was the chief during a very difficult time at the U. And I was proud to work with him, because that was a tough time, and he did a fantastic job, so thank you. Appreciate that, thanks. And Heather, Heather was a great Salt Lake City police officer for twelve years, a detective. We were very sad when you decided we will work and take your talent elsewhere, so it's good to see you back.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to talk, and look, this is, I have a PowerPoint.
Yes.
But it really, as we go, if you have questions, let's talk. Don't wait till the end, because I'll just talk forever. So, but yeah, I'd love to have your input as we go, okay? We're going to talk a little bit about community outreach.
Do you mind if I lift the chair? Like, I can't read.
Oh, yeah, this chair is.
Oh, this chair? Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, we don't like.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Okay.
There you go. Is that better?
Much better.
All right. This is a Salt Lake City PD's vision statement. Every police department has one. They're very similar, but they mean a lot to the agency, and they give them guidance as to what we're trying to do. Our says, "We will build upon the noble traditions of integrity and trust to foster a culture of service, respect, compassion towards employees and the community we serve." What I really want to point out on there is the Salt Lake City priority of community outreach efforts. We are working every day to foster a culture of service, respect, compassion towards the community we serve, and that means all the communities we serve. Look, I became chief back in 2015. Does anybody remember what was happening in 2015? 2015 was on the heels of Michael Brown in Ferguson. You mentioned two kind of landmark things that happened in law enforcement. I became the chief, and I went back, and I was in a training class with a lot of chiefs. And we went and talked with some, I talked with Michael Brown's teacher from Ferguson, and we had a really, really good discussion. But out of that came, look, if you're a chief or you're a police department, if you're in times of crisis and you're trying to figure out who you should call and whose phone number you don't have, you're missing the vote. So I came back as a new chief, and I said, look, I am going to build inroads into every community we serve. And I went, and I made an appointment with Pastor Davis. He's a former commissioner. I think most people at this table know Pastor Davis, well-known, respected gentleman in our community. And I remember going in, down to Calvary Baptist Church, and I walked in, and he was sitting at the chair of Albert Dimitri, it's.
Detriya.
Detriya's the city. And I said, hey, Pastor Davis, it's very nice to be here with you and to meet you. I'm the new chief, and he was very pleased. And he said, Chief Brown, I know who you are. Thank you for coming down. And I said, look, we want to engage with the communities here in Salt Lake City. We want to engage with your, with your community, with your congregation. We want to, we want to have this engagement. And I'll never forget this, because he taught a sermon in very few words. If you know Pastor Davis, he had his glasses on, and he looked over the top of his glasses, and he said, "Chief, we've been here for forty-two years. Where you been?" I said, and that just spoke volumes, because we, sometimes we only reach out in rights, which is bad. We should be building trust and relationships all the time. And that's what's so nice about this board, is we have the opportunity to have discussions and talk about what we can do. And that's, that's the value I see in this. And that's why I'm so happy to see so many new faces at the table. So, next slide. Of course, community outreach, you, a police department, one of the key pillars is community outreach. Salt Lake City recognizes the different peoples, the cultures, the religions, the relationships, organizations, and ideas that make up our unique communities. Look, Salt Lake City, it's not just, it's not, it's a, it's it's a group of people that come together from all different backgrounds, from all different ethnicities, from different countries, to make up this great city. And we have to approach our community outreach holistically. And at the end, I'm going to talk about an ask I have at this commission. We will serve a, this is our mission statement. We will serve as guardians of our community, to preserve life, to maintain human rights, to protect property, and to promote individual responsibility and community commitment. The key word in there is guardians. We, and those of us that have been in law enforcement for a long time, I remember the day when we talked about being warriors in our community. That's no longer the term we talk about. We are guardians, and we're here to guard the communities that we serve. Next slide. Look, community outreach has to be more than just a slogan. It has to be more than just something you talk about. It has to be in the DNA of your police department. You have to make regular deposits in the bank to build trust. And it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't happen from behind a desk. It happens on the street. It happens in meeting people. I remember at times, we talk a lot in email, and we'll talk, now we talk a lot virtually. But it's very easy for people to look at another community or the police department and say, I don't like you, you know, or watch TV. You ever do that? You go, ah, I don't like them. And, but it's easy to do that. I'll tell you what, when you step off out of your comfort zone and sit down and talk to people face to face, it's really hard to hit up close, all right? It is, it really is. And what you find out is people are people. They're just like you and I. They have kids, they have dreams, they have ambitions. So we focus, our philosophy on community outreach starts at the top, and it's instilled in every employee, from the newest officer to the most seasoned and our professional staff. It has to be a part of your DNA of your department. Next slide. This is, it's very important for this office and the police department. And it's so important that we have a community outreach officer. And I'm going to bring her next meeting, but her name is Detective Carissa Schlesinger. And that's her. She's, she's a great police officer. She's been with our department five years. She's young, she's ambitious. Yes, that's her on her SWAT gear. She was on, she was on the SWAT team for a while. She's very confident, and she's very motivated and passionate about building relationships. So I'd like to bring her next time and have her present some of the things that she's doing. But that's, I want to reiterate how important it is that we have a full-time person that works on making inroads into our community. Any questions? Is it really quiet? All right. Next slide. So a lot of talk about what we want to do, but let me talk, let me, let's talk about how we're measuring up. As of 2024, the Salt Lake City PD has a new way of tracking its community outreach. Historically, we've kept, you may see on a calendar that we went to this school, we read. We went and we did this event. We didn't have a good way of really tracking what we were doing in our communities. We now can track every event, the time spent by our, with our communities, the total number of police officers that were there, and the council district in which they were involved. So I'd like a person to come and talk to you about that. But we are trying to build off of, I mean, 2020 and 2021, with the pandemic, it really kind of shut down a lot of our community. It was tough. It was really hard. But we, 2022, we kind of started some momentum. And we made it one of the four pillars of what we're trying to accomplish in our police department. Anybody know what the first pillar is? Come on, take a guess. What do cops do?
Keep people safe.
They what?
Keep people safe.
Right, we lower crime, right? All right, Gary, we get the new point here. The second pillar, well, when people call, we need to be there, right? To lower response times. You were going to say that, right? Our third, look, 2020, Jason, you know this as well. We had a lot of cops that could retire. They did. It was a tough time. We had a lot of, a lot of people said, hey, this is just not for me. They left. Our staffing was very depleted. It was hard. So our third pillar was to increase our staffing. You were going to say that, right? Of course. And then the fourth pillar, look, if you don't have the trust and you don't have a relationship and you're not working with the community, those first three are really, really hard. Your best partner in everything we do is the communities we serve, and that's all communities. You were going to say that. Next slide. So we saw a ninety-seven percent increase in the community outreach events between May and December of 2022 compared to the same period in 2023. Ninety-seven percent increase. We hosted events in 2023. They included bike rodeos in Glendale, a neighborhood walk with students in the Fair Park, attending the Hispanic Festival, meeting with religious groups, and having lunch with students at Northwest Middle School. And in 2024, we have hosted twenty-seven community events, investing thirty-three hours back into our communities. 2024, we posted community events in each council district. They include providing tours of our public safety building, welcoming, welcoming back students at school, meeting with seniors, attending religious and cultural specific events, and reading to children. Someone mentioned, who mentioned our Promising Youth Program? One of the commissioners. Okay, here's your point. Good job.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure you get it, Chloe.
Thank you.
Look, another great area that we need to invest a lot of time is in our schools, and we have a Promising Youth Program. And when we talked about it, the commission really, really loved that program. For the school year of 2023 through 24, we have served seventy-two youths. And those are kind of the breakdown of who we've been working with. We have four full-time Promising Youth Specialists. We have four vacancies that are part-time, so if anybody wants to, on part-time job, we're hiring.
What actually happens in that program?
We work with the schools, with the teachers, with the counselors, and they identify people, Promising Youth, that need a little support and help in their lives. So our specialists work with them. We teach coping skills. We teach conflict resolution. We teach decision-making skills to help our youth become successful in home, at school, and in life. to help our youth become successful in home, at school, and in life. It's really a great program. So, we have two sessions this summer, one in June and one in July, where we're going to take probably twenty-five students in each session. And we've worked with them through, for three or four weeks. They go, I mean, they do all kinds of things, but we take kids up to a camp and run them through a skills rope course. A lot of these kids have never done those things. They've never kayaked. They've never swam in a lake. But they've really, what happens is, what really happens is they, we see each other as people. And they see police officers as people. And they go really, really, really nice relationships. We have a graduation at Jordan Park. Last year, I think we graduated forty-seven. We have a big cookout. Kids come, the family come, we take pictures, we give out awards, but again, keep that in mind because it's part of my ask. Any questions on that? Okay, excellent. This is where we're planning to go for the fall. Any cultural, specific event, including the Hispanic festival, the Indian food festival. My, one of my favorites is the friendly Island Tongue Festival Parade. That is fantastic. But look, community engagement is not just a strategy. It's our commitment to build trust, foster understanding, and work together for a safe neighborhood. So, my ask is this, commissioners. We do a lot, and you represent a lot of communities here, right? If you know of a community where we can engage, that you can be with us. I mean, you don't want to, you come be with us, introduce us to the communities that you serve. Let's talk about anything we can do to build those trust and those relationships. I welcome that. So, I'll stay after you. I want you to come to the promising youth graduation and see that. That is really cool. But anything we do, you're welcome to go to. I'll get a calendar to Michelle and you can look at that. The door's open. We'll come pick you up. Whatever you need, okay? Any questions on that? You're being pretty easy on me. All right, let's talk about the history of policing. We, Michelle's been helping us for the last year or so. We've been working on providing some training within the police department. We had a history of policing was a video from retired Chief Daniel Hahn. We have the video done, Michelle. It's ready to go. We will be incorporating that training. It's a one-hour training and it'll be a video training. And we'll start with the summer trimester training. So, every officer that in the police department will log on and participate in that training. That's going to be, that'll be nice. True Empowering of Utah Quality Advocates, that one is still in process. We're still working the finance, work out the purchasing RFP. Equality Utah, Olivia and her team, they're coming in person to our training that starts on April first, April second, sir. Olivia, when we said you're going to have to come twenty times and do the class, she came back and I said, thank you, I'll be there. That's a lot of commitment from her. And so, she's coming. And these are courses and times, if you want to come and see it, I'd just love that. And really, she wants to focus on to educate, create an understanding of the LGBTQIA+ terms and concepts, what that really means, to inform and bring awareness to legal protections. A lot of times, we forget about those. To create an understanding of lived inequalities. And then, how to become an ally, how we can be an ally and build understanding at the workplace. Any questions on the training with that lineup?
Yeah. So, the video, it's almost done?
It's done.
Something that's been, okay, so it's a one-hour presentation. Okay, so, I think that's fantastic because I think one of the biggest points missed, and this is something that I have been talking about with our new recruits as well, when we hire new people or even our alaterals, they don't get this training in the academy. They don't get the understanding of the history of law enforcement in the academy. So, it's largely unknown to them. They don't understand why certain communities feel the way they do. They don't understand why the traffic stop was so bad when I, when it's a white officer and a person with a car, right? They don't understand the history of the LGBTQIA+ community and why there is a distrust of law enforcement within that community. And it goes back to Stonewall, which I never even heard about until about four years ago. So, it's not part of the curriculum. It's not part of high school or even college curriculum. I'm college educated. And this was totally new stuff to me. So, I think this is outstanding that there's a introduction to this history. I would offer it's more than an hour. It's probably continuous and evolving throughout your career because there's a lot to unpack. And that's what I learned in my very brief time at the university. It was like, why, why, why are things the way they are? And I'll be the first to admit, in the first fifteen, twenty years of my career, I didn't understand why, but there wasn't anybody to help me understand that, right? So, I'm thoroughly impressed and I'm looking forward to seeing this video to see how it's received by officers and then, you know, where it can develop from there. Because the one thing I know is, or one thing I know, there's no one and done training. It has to be continuous, progressive, and evolving throughout your career. So, I applaud you for that.
Thank you, Jason. That's great. Glad to share it with you too. I mean, Chief Hahn, he was, he was the chief in second through the major city chiefs association. He's a friend and associate. And he came and presented to chiefs, and he takes it all the way back to slave patrols. And he says, you don't realize what policing was used for and how it has been used politically through the centuries in this country. And how racism has kind of been culturally accepted for many, many years. And he even, he even brought it to Salt Lake City. There was a restaurant on Island Drive. You know what I'm talking about?
I do.
And I, and I just
The chicken place.
Yeah, I fell out of my chair. I said, are you kidding me? Because we, I mean, that was before. We don't, we've never been taught that. I talked to Pastor Davis. He goes, yeah, oh, yeah. I have some of the, I have some of the salt pepper shakers, some of the, and he has some of the memorabilia out of there. Not because he's proud of it, because it really represents something to the community that he, that he serves. But what's really neat is it's not somebody talking to the police. It's one of the peers. And sometimes when we hear it from one of our peers, it's different. So, I think it's a great training. And you're right, it should take, it should be a week because there's so much there. So. And if you guys would like to see it, I'd love to let you take a look at it too. A lot of it was to start with that video and these other groups to kind of take it into the community of Salt Lake City and talk about, you know, the different communities and some of the, you know, the way they've been oppressed, the way they feel, the way they've been treated. So. But we're working on those parts. Any other questions on that?
I have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
So, do you do any, like, I don't know, I'm not a social scientist, so some of the sociologists could say, like, it feels like there should be some sort of testing that's done. I mean, can you show behavioral changes or changes that occur, like, because of the training, you know, in terms of, I mean, I would agree that it feels like it needs to be an ongoing conversation. But, like, when you go into a classroom or into a school, there's an intervention and you want to show a change in behavior, that shows change in the way, or something, you've learned something.
Yeah.
Is there any sort of, like, post-testing that you're doing or things like that in terms of, because it's, it's a big shift, you know? Law enforcement's entrenched, in my view, in kind of how it's always been done and to be able to move people. And so, I'm just curious.
No, Haley, I think you're spot on. In fact, some of your new to the commission, within the commission, there is one of the recommendations is to have a an academic study about what these trainings are doing within the Salt Lake City Police Department. I mean, we're talking like a Pew study. Somebody, it's going to take some money and some time. It can't be a fire weekend, I would say, you know? This has to be done professionally.
Yeah.
And so, it'll take some time to find a team, maybe somebody of the University of Utah or of our colleges to come in and do that. That would be really neat to know where you started and then how you're making a difference, you know,
Totally.
over the years. Because it's never one and done. This is something we're going to keep talking about.
Totally.
Yeah. A good one. Another coin. Okay. Any more questions on that? That's a big topic. Can we see some slides behind?
Yes.
Okay. All right. But listen, commissioners, you're more than welcome. I can let you know where the trainings are if you'd like to go and watch them. Love to have you there. So, okay, let's talk. And this is another thing that's near and dear to the commission's art, is a police community response team. PCRT, PCRT, PCRT. We have somebody after, sorry. But this, these are people, these are professional staff that don't carry a gun or badge. But they do fantastic work in our community. Some of them are retired cops who have come back, they want to continue to serve. Some of them are young people that have graduated from our explore program right into into this group. We have sixteen full-time members. This group have handled four thousand calls for service this year. This year. So, we're talking two and a half months. Now, that doesn't, people may go, that's that's good. But let me tell you, that's four thousand calls that cops don't have to go. And they're doing a fantastic job. We have eight females, eight males. They're led by Lieutenant Mason Givens. And I don't know if you saw the recent KSL story. You ought to take a look at it. It's probably online. But it really highlights what this team has brought to our department. And, you know, there's two things that cops hate. That's how things are and change, right? We're kind of a stubborn group. But I went to a lineup and this is, this is how I know we're making a difference and we're moving the needle. I was talking to some of the officers before they had, they were going out. We're talking about new cars and all the things they really like. And then, one officer says, hey, chief, when are we getting some more of those PCRT people, those folks? They're awesome, Dan. They're fantastic. They do a lot of work. And that's, I mean, when, and they say the same, the same thing about social workers. When they start saying, hey, do we need more? They're embracing what we're trying to do. And some of the recommendations this commission has made, which means we're getting, we are becoming more diverse and we have a better response model to better serve all our communities. So, if you don't, maybe you can send out a link to that story. It's a really good story.
I have a quick question. So, I'm new to the commission. So, what does the response team, what type of calls are they usually answering?
They do a lot of investigation. I mean, low-level calls. I mean, if it's, if it's an active call, if it's violent, they don't go. But they handle a lot of traffic or an accident. I mean, a lot of times when you're investigating an accident, Jason, Heather, you know that one officer will be investigating and it takes maybe three or four to hold traffic so that nobody gets hit or hurt. They will actually come out in those vehicles you see in the picture and hold the traffic. When we had the floods up on Seventeenth South this year, we had all kinds of cops holding traffic all over. We called this team out. We released the cops to go back to the door. They needed to do. And this little team held all the traffic for almost twenty-four hours. So, they're really a good ally. I mean, they can unlock doors. They can play basketball with kids. They actually caught a bank robber. I don't know. It wasn't in their job description, but they did it. So, what do you say, right? Yeah. So, it's more the low-level things, but like I say, every call that we get has to be answered. And if they can help us out, they're doing a fantastic job of it.
Do they?
No, no, I was just thinking.
Yeah.
Do they respond to, like, people that are having mental health issues that don't need a police response?
They may, they may go with an officer just to make sure it's okay. A lot of times, you'll hear officers go and when, and you'll hear officers on the radio and they'll say, hey, start the social workers. So, two cops will go. They'll make sure the scene is secure. It's not a crisis. There's no violence. And then, they'll gladly call in the experts and say, please take care of this. And then, they can go do a thing. So, yeah, they augment that. But a lot of times, our social, our social workers will do that.
So, you have a separate social worker team?
Yeah, we have nineteen social workers. We actually deploy social workers Monday through Saturday from about seven in the morning to eleven PM. We have a few more vacancies to fill and we can start getting the entire weekend covered. And then, I'd like to see them start working the graveyard shift because, I mean, in the middle of the night, I mean, when somebody's in crisis, it's really sad to be there as a cop and have nothing to offer them. It's really tough to walk away and say, you know, they know that they can't go in the shelter. They know where they can and can't go. And there's just nothing there. So, we can call in our social workers that have a lot of access to, I mean, if they need a place to stay, a hotel room, anything, they're much, they're much better at it than we are. All right. So, here's my ask. We are here as a nice help us, help us find those communities that we don't see. Help us be better at serving our people. Easy, but hard. Okay? Any questions? I'm going to keep nagging you. You're going to see, I'm going to come out, pick you all up and go do some things. All right? It's great to talk in here. What we're really going to make a difference is when we're out on the street. And I'd love to have your help. Look at that.
Thank you, chief.
If you look at that coin, Jason, we make a new one every year. Michelle, did you?
Okay, yeah.
This is a brand new one.
Yes, the commissioner.
But this is the new coin that Andy Clough, who's actually out of town.
This is what it looks like.
The one side is the badge from eighteen fifty-one. Okay, our police department started March tenth, eighteen fifty-one. We hired twenty-five officers. We hired forty officers and we paid them twenty-five cents a month. We pay a little bit more now, so if anyone wants to join our team. But that's the old badge. It hasn't changed a lot. But there are forty stars around that badge representing those forty officers. You flip it over, there's the modern badge that Andy put on there with the American flag. And you can see the new state flag. How many commissioners do you need?
We're going to, and we're We have fifteen total. So, how many are in here, Sid? Five.
You have five in here, yeah.
So, ten. And then I go.
Okay.
Perfect, yes. I'll make sure they did it. Thank you.
So, next time we come, I'm going to bring Carissa. We'll talk about what she did. And then, I'd like to talk to you about a sort of accreditation. One of the things that we talked about with the commission was a CLIA accreditation. And it's good. It's good to have an agency accredited. But there's a new UPOCA, if you know about it. We would like to hold both of them side to side and maybe show you that we can get as much or more from the UPOCA, the Utah Chiefs of Police accreditation. And so that you feel very comfortable that we're not downgrading, but we're actually, I'll be doing something that's better for our agency as well. But we'll talk about that in more detail, okay? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I cover twenty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, next we have Nicholas Frederick with the Park Rangers program. So, the time is yours.
Great. Thanks so much for having me. I appreciate getting invited to this meeting. I've been the director for the Park Rangers for about a year and a half, been with the city. The program is pretty new. It started just in the summer of twenty twenty-two. So, we've been making lots of changes, kind of trying to build the plane as we're flying it. But I think we're in a really exciting place right now and trying to really expand our partnerships, especially what we do with SLCPD. So, it's been a good improvement so far. Really excited to see. So it's been a good improvement so far. Really excited to see what more we can do. So just by way of introducing you to the program, we have eighteen full-time Rangers. They work, we give them on seven days a week. So we have a team on Sunday through Wednesday, and then Wednesday through Saturday. We shift their schedules around with the daylight. So as of right now, they only work during the daylight hours. We have four main hubs, so offices in the field where the Rangers are based out of. So those are Liberty Park, Jordan, Fairmont, and Pioneer. And then we also work out of the Fisher Mansion Carriage House, which is a really cool refurbishment building right on the Jordan River Trail. If any of you all come out, leave my car in after, just make sure we're there. Yeah, it's a cool place to work. Plus, we get to keep an eye on the trail from out there. We also have a, a team that works in the foothills. So that's how the math works out to eighteen, four. Teams of four in each of our hubs, and then two foothill Rangers who patrol up there. Our mission is really simple. It's to make Salt Lake City trails and parks welcoming for everyone. So it's kind of a big, broad mission, but really the most valuable thing we do is have a presence in the parks, especially through our patrolling. So public safety is a big part of that. We've been trying to figure out the best way to positively impact public safety and to show that. And most of it is just through, through our presence. We really do notice that when the Rangers walk around, people are a little on, on slightly better behavior. People feel more comfortable in the parks. That's a lot of our conversations with people when we greet them. It's just a, hey, it's really just nice to see you guys, like, thanks for being here. So that part of it is really rewarding, and also being eyes and ears for Public Lands and reporting any issues, liaising with community members and as well as with PD and other first responders. So public safety is one of our three pillars. Our other two, which I can just touch on at the end, because they're not pertinent to this meeting, are customer service and then education. You know, kind of some of the fun stuff you think of, if you think of a park ranger. So next slide, please, Michelle. So our park rangers don't have any ticketing authority. So all the compliance they do is voluntary education stuff, different types of park rules, and really just kind of try to be a softer touch, right? Somebody has a dog off-leash that doesn't require police intervention. Sometimes if you ask somebody politely, explain maybe the reason why, that can go a long way. We've had some really good positive in that way, I think. Like, places like Memory Grove have always been really tough with dogs off-leash. But we sent a lot of Rangers there last year during the summer in the evening hours when people were taking their dogs. And just explaining that this is a war memorial, it's supposed to be kind of a peaceful, contemplative place. But right up the trail is an off-leash dog area. If you could just please walk through here with your dog on leash, like, let him, let him loose out there. Just be greatly appreciated. And that works a lot better, I think, than having, we've even had people tell us this, just like, that they have community members who visit, you know, these are parks, people come over and over again, and they see the same folks. And they've said to us, I thought it was a plan, because I was visiting that day. But they came up to them and said, like, you know, yeah, somebody just written us a ticket. I wouldn't have cared. I would have said, like, screw you, I'm gonna keep coming and doing my thing when you're not here. What do I care? But since they were approached in a respectful way about why, you know, you're not getting in trouble, just please, please do this. And here's why, that they were able to change the behavior. So we found a lot of, a lot of success with that with dogs. And they say there's some people who don't, and that's, that's okay. We have animal services for them when issues become necessary and out of control, and we need to get folks. So dogs are a big one. And then interactions with the unhoused are other big, big area where we work. We have a lot of really terrific Rangers with big hearts, who are really excellent at forging relationships with folks in the unhoused community. And a lot of that is doing check-ins, seeing how people are doing, trying to connect them to services. They work really close with the homeless services team so that they're up to date on exactly what is available for people, what kind of resources. Our Rangers have bus passes with them too, so they can hand those out if somebody just wants to go to like a resource fair, but they don't have a way to get there, you know. Be kind of tough getting to downtown from some of our, some of our parks. So, you know, nobody's homeless because of a park, but that just is the place where a lot of, a lot of folks end up. So our Rangers take on a big responsibility with that, trying to, trying to make sure that folks don't get nothing further worse happens to them. They also, if somebody become, if situations become unsanitary, we have to call in county health department to come clean it up, or situations are becoming dangerous just by the elements that are there. That's something the Rangers are really adept at noticing and getting, escalating that to the, to the folks who can come in and help correct that situation. So they also do other things, just like pick up trash. You know, nobody likes to see trash around, creates sort of a dirty environment where people, other people who are visiting the parks won't feel as respectful of the space if they see that other, you know, the rest of the community's not doing it. So trying to keep parks tidy. Go to the next slide, just because this one actually shows somebody just cleaning up some vandalism. You know, we know that when people tag stuff, especially if it's a gang tag, that the liquor that's taken off, less likely folks are to come back. So we have a part of our PD team at Public Lands to kind of take care of some of the smaller stuff that we see out, out on our trails. And then just like physical park maintenance, public safety stuff, you know, not policing, but still public safety. And as I mentioned, the interactions with the unhoused, especially like in the wintertime. We did have one situation earlier this winter where folks showed up right at the start of their shift, and there was a woman walking around with her dog with no shoes on. It was really cold that morning. She looked a little disoriented. They called nine-one-one, and one of the fantastic police social workers and an officer were out there, like within fifteen minutes to help, you know, get her to where, where she could be safe. So, you know, it's just really, that's, that's a community that our Rangers really take a lot of pride in trying to, trying to improve that, that situation for the city so that, so that, because that's one of the number one issues that everyone always mentions wanting to be solved. Next slide, please, Michelle. Oh, actually, you can go back, sorry. There's a couple stuff. Just that the Rangers carry radios so they can communicate with each other. And also listen in for PD channels. So if there's an emergency, they can notify folks in the park of that emergency to try to, try to keep people safe. Or just give them information, right? Sometimes like, we didn't know until we, until we asked why so many of the police officers just drove through Fairmont Park. Just apparently it's more, more convenient to do that. And so, so we, like, oh, if something happening, and then we started listening, it's like masked. I was like, nope, nothing's happening, just normal operations. So if somebody is in the park and they get scared, we can say, no, nothing's going on. So our major goal is to coordinate more closely with, with PD. Some of the captains were really gracious with their time, Kevin Diamond and Captain Goodman, meeting with our Rangers. And we want to really work closely with the community liaison officers just to identify issues, see where we can be helpful, and also be able to reach back out when, when we notice something in the parks that, that a police officer might not notice because they're not there. So, you know, Officer Stewart, Oliver, and follows have been really gracious there as well, terrific to work with. We also just contact non-emergency for non-emergencies, you know, for things like drug use, just creating heat maps, trying to add more data for PD about what the situation is in some of these spots, so that they can respond, like you mentioned, responding more efficiently to incidents. We just try to do what we can to add to that data. So I mentioned animal services, also work with fire about stuff in this, you know, policing, but like, trying to keep fires down. There was an arson along Jordan River Trail last summer. So, you know, trying to, trying to do what we can to put out those fires quickly and to do, preserve any sort of evidence so that they can track that person down. And, yeah, that's, yeah, working with homeless services. They'll also, homeless services will reach out to us too, so that we can do a first contact with, with folks. So that can be helpful if it's, somebody need, if somebody's in crisis and they need an emergency, we can call that in. Sometimes it's just folks who are like, yeah, I'm just camping here for the night, and I'm moving on. That would deal. And then other times when, if like, a situation is dangerous and needs police intervention, something that needs to happen a little more quickly, they can identify that as well. So. Anybody have any questions about the public safety aspect of it? That's, yeah, more comprehensive parts of what we do.
I have a question, if you can come to me online.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Wessel.
Yeah, so as I mentioned at the start of the meeting, I had a community meeting that Chief Brown attended. A lot of West Side community councils and neighborhoods are concerned with increase in drug, drug sales, people congregating along the Jordan River Trail, specifically at like the North Temple and Jordan River Bridge and some of the other bridges along the trail, where the drug dealing is in, and then the use is happening in like groups right along there. So one of the things that the chief, I believe, told us is they're having a problem with cartels embedding among the communities of the unhoused. So my concern is that we have your park rangers out there in uniform. Are they safe? Do they have, what, what kind of contingencies do they have to keep them safe if they come up upon some, you know, worst-case scenario, somebody who is from a cartel dealing drugs, and they see somebody approaching them in uniform? I hope that was, that made sense. That was kind of a really long question.
No, yeah, no, we, we definitely ingrained in them to themselves, say first that they're, they're not law enforcement. They're not supposed to engage folks when there's illegal activity going on, that that's something to report. Yeah, just like if people are violating park rules, you know, and like drinking and being boisterous, like, that's something they can, they can approach folks and ask them to take it elsewhere. But yeah, with anything with like heavy drug use or even moderate drug use, like, that's just something they're, they're told to put into the non-emergency and get away. And we've also been monitoring the, you know, the Jordan River situation and like, really encouraging them to stay closer to Jordan Park and not go north past the, like around the Archilotta Bridge area. It's a, it's a spot in the, yeah, Fairmont or Fair Park and Cotton Woods have been really, really difficult recently. So a lot of it is just trying to be proactive to keep them out of those spots and, and have the radios on them. I mean, we did a quick training with PD, you know, feel super comfortable using the radios, but they all said, hey, if something ever were to happen, please hop on and get, say something as quickly as you can so that someone will come respond. So having the radios on them is a, is a big tool. And that was something that we learned from, because there are these park ranger programs throughout the country, and they all kind of look a little different, but all of them say that radios and cooperation with PD are some of the, some of their biggest tools.
Hey, Jason, can I jump in just real quick? Because that cartel question comes up a lot. Look, most, most of drugs that are coming into this country are coming through the cartels. But the last thing the cartels want along the Jordan River is any interaction or anything to draw attention to them. Most of the time, they're not gonna engage in any type of violence. They're gonna walk away. And you'll probably see that when you guys come up, you see people leave. They don't want to, they don't want to, they don't want to be subject of a police report or have somebody looking for them. So there is violence, sometimes people fighting, insults, but the true cartel, they're, they're typically want to get away from any type of interaction with law enforcement or.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So, yeah, next slide, Michelle. So customer service, just one of the other things we do, like I mentioned, try to say as many greetings as possible just to raise morale in the parks, be friendly. The park's just really nice. Do information tabling about either public land projects or maybe educational things going on. We're starting like a Coffee with a Ranger series too. A lot of our Rangers are subject matter experts. So that's really neat too, just to kind of learn a little more about some of the really cool natural resources that we have in the community. And then being at events, doing community things with partners. Next slide, please, Michelle. And then also trainings, so they don't carry any sort of defensive weaponry either. And so their trainings are really about, they're making themselves their tools for the job. So we really do invest a lot into them with de-escalation techniques, ways to work well with others, ways to avoid burnout, and to make sure that they're happy and satisfied with their, with their work, boosting their emotional intelligence, sort of being able to recognize heightened states in others and how to sort of respond to those. That's, that's an ongoing process. We just kind of continually are trying to train them and get them to the point where they feel like they're confident and they're capable of going out into the field and interacting with the community every day. Yep, and picking up weeds, because nobody, nobody likes to see weeds. A lot of people will approach them when they're doing sort of some of these other tasks, like picking up litter or picking up weeds. It's kind of a, it's a good time to talk to them about what they're doing and then, you know, maybe ask other questions about something with the park. So that's, that's more learning. Next to, let's go quickly. So, yeah, education, we do programs with some of our public programs, trying to, trying to really boost those up. Also work with like libraries, schools, and U-City, other community groups, just to, just to try to share some of that knowledge, get kids to be passionate about parks. All of our Rangers are certified interpretive guides, which is, you know, fun. And, yeah, makes them feel really park rangery, they've got the hats, so they're more recognizable. We just got them all green pants, so they would, they'd look a little more rangery too. And then also the education, you know, part of that is educating folks about park policies, so why these rules are in place. Really kind of taking the time to make folks understand the why of something and not just be, be a, be a hammer for someone. So. Yeah, last slide. Oh, sorry, I did have this one. So we have a dashboard on our website that just updates them every day with what they've done for the previous seven days, which is just kind of fun to click through, just to see some of their notes, they leave pictures. So it's interesting, like, if they're, if you're concerned about a condition of a park, you can see how recently a ranger was there. Maybe they might have commented on that. Or if, yeah, if there's just somewhere in your neighborhood and you're just interested in how often the Rangers visit, it's just kind of a neat thing to look at or it's fun to read through. They didn't know that these were public for a while, that their notes were. I assume you do a good job of telling them. So they were, there was nothing inappropriate in there. It's just kind of nice when they're a little candid about like, oh, somebody was a little grumpy this morning when we, you know, we asked them to put their dog on leash. They were very diplomatic about it. So, yeah, last slide, Michelle. Just, again, thanks for, thanks for having me. We really want to, want to try to do our part to increase public safety in parks and kind of show what we're doing. So a big part of that is collecting data, trying to really hone that in with sort of outcome statistics we can, we can come up with. So if there's anything that you were interested in seeing or had any ideas around that, love, love to hear from you. Or we also sort of try to send Rangers to spots that are hotspots. So I'll leave my, my car here. Just anything ever pops up, just feel free to, to contact me. If you really want to be as responsive as we can to our community, that's why we have our Rangers on seven days a week. Trying to, trying to really just make our parks a much more positive place for everyone. So, thanks again.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Carmen, as well.
She might have bounced.
I know. Oh, no, she's here. She's still here in this space. Thank you. Now you're free to go. Thank you so much. Okay, commissioners, so the last few items here are just going into our, just our working group. So this is a new transition this year. So now we'll have meetings every other month. So on the agendas, whether you have it here in front of you or on your laptops, you'll see that we'll only be meeting every other month. So our next meeting, formal meeting, an open public meeting, will be on May ninth. But that doesn't mean we're off in the off month. So one of the reasons why we took back some of the meetings or scaled down on it is because there's some large priorities. I'm not sure, and I'm not holding you to this, but because I know it's a long report. And we will have an orientation for the new commissioners as well, because I did learn that from last year, bringing on a half new board. Like, you all are probably lost. Even with your experience, this is a lot going on. Even when I had to learn my role, I had to read that hundred-page, phase one report, the SLC PD response to it. And now we have ongoing reports from year to year. So I think I only sent you all, I might have sent you all everything, but for sure I sent you the, what we're working on this year. So from now until May ninth, it's like a working month. We're working, just work sessions in small groups. We just did away with our subcommittees, and we're just working in these small groups to prioritize these different topics and try to get ahead of it. One of them is what Chief mentioned earlier, the implicit bias survey for the department, that would be a heavy lift. But once we do that, it will be done every five years. So, these are some of the things I would love to see. I think that's the last one. The implicit bias survey is the last one from the phase one report, and that phase one report will be closed, cause I think we're like ninety-five percent done. And everything else is coming from the years after. So, today, what I would like to do with, with the new commissioners is have you all join these working groups, so. I will. Well, I'll just go over what we kind of need a working group for. So, one of them is the research on how to conduct the implied bias survey for SLCPD. Now on that group, we do have Commissioner Hopkins as well as Commissioner Duranti. Do we have any commissioners interested in that? You're interested in that, so we have Deetria.
Can I hear what the rest of the committees are?
Yes, did you all, do you wanna hear everything first? Is that better? Okay. So, all of what we have to do, so we have the implied bias survey. We have the metrics, Commissioner Shering fellow, you mentioned this earlier, we are trying to look for metrics. For success for the community-based training, the DEI training. Some consultants, which I think it's the ones that are still in the RFP process, some do like for what we pay them, they'll do that. But for the others, we wanna make sure it's just consistent, so I know Commissioner Duranti was very passionate about that, so I wanted to make sure that was a subgroup as well. So there's that, the metrics for the DEI trainings, the implied bias survey. We, the commission also approved last year to do community listening sessions. So, just with the presentation today, we have to be in the community, not just in this space. Oftentimes you'll see we won't have much public comment here. So, we, as a commission, wanted to. Get more into the community. I think we were leaning towards a spring. Community listening session, which is right around the corner, and these don't have to be too much of a heavy lift, we really want to. Get into the community, find the best way to advertise and make sure we're hearing those voices of what. Ongoing issues the community is facing. Cause we don't know what else to prioritize, and if there's more issues, then that's good, but. As we're working towards this progress, we do wanna be proactive instead of reactive, right? When something big happens, then we're all scrambling, so. That is, I won't even put a timeline, we'll just say the community listening session, I think we wanna lean towards two. But even if we get one this year, I think that would be more than enough, as you all engage and learn your roles. And engage with the work that PD is already doing as well. Then we have our oversight committee, that's for school resource officer, officers, and that's a partnership. Between the school district and Salt Lake City Police Department, so that only offers a space to one commissioner, and that commissioner is Lysia Satini for that one. But I'm sure with Jennifer Newell and her work with SROs. And her overlap with education and SROs, I, I meant to say, will have more ongoing things there. Cause I know usually our youth and younger commissioners usually like to join that group, but that is a. Right now at a standstill, just as they're, they're rolling out this MOU. We also have research on the civilian review board. I did meet with. Tanya Richardson and Kristi Marcy, who's over that, and they will be attending our July meeting. I have them on the books for that already. But essentially with that topic, and I did talk with the attorneys about this as well, just, it's more, this topic came about. And to, I guess to ensure the effectiveness of the CRB. So, to have that, if anybody is interested in that, please let me know. Right now we have Commissioner Wessel for that one, and then we have our neurodiversity subcommittee. So that is the only subcommittee, like official subcommittee we will have this year, only because that is a collaboration between. Our commission as well as the accessibility and disability commission. And that is basically one of Mayor's priorities, focus on sensory needs and how we can provide a further impact in that area. And then we work with Deputy Chief Andrew Wright on that one. So that does have a formal. Meeting time, which is the fourth Monday of the month from four to five PM, we'll be meeting this month. So if you're interested in that, I'll add you to the invite, and then. The last thing is what Nick came in here to present about, one of the priorities there. From the commission is to work closely with the park rangers program. And seeing just how we can ensure safety of the Rangers, but also. It, it's a growing program, right? So how can the commission help and support their efforts as they relate to public safety as well? So that's everything on the table. For right now. There are some stuff with the courts, but I think I, we're gonna hold off on that, cause this is a lot. But there is a sector with the courts and that is written out in the NVP report as well. And I will be working with all of the commissioners, just so you know, in the next week, so that we can see what this looks like. But I do wanna get an orientation for the two commissioners, and kind of brief you on everything, and the chair and vice chair, so our chair is Tanya Hopkins. And our vice chair is Lysia Satini. They'll be joining us as we just. Lay, laying everything out for you all, because I, I noticed last year it was tough for new commissioners. Coming in half new and half for the core commissioners, so now we're all pretty new here, so. With that, I'll just go back in order and then ask for. Just a raise of hands or let me know if you're interested. So, so for the implied bias survey. Deetria, you're interested in that, and we have Tanya and Katie already on that. Is anyone else interested in this?
I would be interested.
Okay, thank you, Chloe. Anyone else? I just know this one will tell me, are you?
Well, I, I actually go wherever you need me to go. I am really interested in that one, I also am interested in the listening session.
You are? Okay, yes. Okay, so let's put you on for. The, the implicit bias survey as well. Cause once that lift is. Once it's there, we have to do it every five years, so I think once we get that standard and process, I think it'll be easy, but I can, I can see it be. A huge lift, and we, we will have partners, like maybe the University of Utah. So next is the metrics for success, these are like the accountability factors for the. Just what you all have questioned here, like how do we know if the trainings are working? How do we know they're effective? On this one, we again have Tanya and Katie on this one. Do we have anybody else interested for this one? Chloe, you, you want to?
Would I be able to do both of them, or?
Yeah, you can sign up for more than one. Don't overwhelm yourself is what I would say. I think, for the most part, the metrics, I think once we get the other two consultants, both of them did. Mention that piece. But until we have them, I don't think with the video. And equality Utah, they might have their metrics, we can ask them, but it essentially, we just want something there just in case. So Chloe, I'll have you on that one.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, anyone else before we move on? So next we have the community listening sessions. We have Jason, Ovia and Stephen. I will probably say, I'll take. Two more for this one.
I'd like to be on that.
You wanna be on that one?
And you as well.
And I'm also interested in the implicit bias, I don't know if there's any room left or.
Then implicit bias, okay. And then I'll put you on, cause I know.
Sure.
Yes, I think, seeing how it looks, we can have more, and then if we need to cut back, we can do that, so. Oh, we have two Jasons, I just realized that. I was like, why am I? So now we're gonna have to, last, last year we had two Steves, now we have two Jasons. Okay, yes, so both are on this. The next thing is the civilian review board. Anybody interested in that?
I'm interested.
You're interested in that one? I can say after meeting with them, it was nice to see their side of things, and I think, are you on it? Okay, I wasn't sure if we were trying to be on that one too, but. I, after talking with them, I think they could use some support from the commission in terms of just different behind the scenes things, so.
Kind of curious about that one.
You're curious? Okay. And anybody from online for the civilian review board? Okay, so we have both Jasons and Deetria, I think that's a good start, and then. The neurodiversity subcommittee, like I said, that is a formal meeting because we meet with Deputy Chief, right, as well as.
Who's gonna, I can help out with that community listening board if you need somebody.
Oh, you're already on it?
Okay, good.
From last time, yes.
Okay, good.
So the neurodiversity subcommittee, we have Lysia, Ovia and Stephen Cowbert. Is, is anybody else interested in being added to that? Yeah, I'll send you that meeting invite. And then the park rangers program is the last one. Is anybody interested in working on that one? I mean, there's a person with it, but it will be kind of more like. Just working closely with Nick.
Hello.
You'll do it?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, you can, I'll sign up.
Alex? Okay, perfect. Okay, I think we're set. My first to-do item, like I said, I, I just wanna orient all the commissioners, so I would scare them away and we can be ready at full capacity. But within the next week, you'll see a follow-up email from me about this meeting with the minutes, I'll get that from Maria. And all of these updates and assignments. And then we won't go into a tentative quote session today, and then our next meeting will be on May ninth. So, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Question before we move on.
Oh, yes, question.
Um, the orientation you're talking about, is that gonna happen between now and May ninth, like when?
I'm hoping to have it in the next couple of weeks. I'm gonna send out a Google poll, cause I know, I've seen all of your resumes, so I'm like, I'm sure everybody is busy.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I would love for it to be in person, but whatever works, as long as you all are getting the information, and of course if it's in person, we would love to like provide refreshments and things like that. Depending how long we need, give you something substantial as well, so I just wanna make sure. You all feel like in a good space. I think you all have the experience, it's just understanding, this commission I know can be a lot. Ovia, did you have a question? Or is your hat raised?
Sorry, I had the mute on there. I, I didn't know, Michelle, if you wanted to talk to them about yesterday's Latino. Coalition situation, where we've discussed the language barrier in regards to a. Officer.
So that situation. Um, we will have to follow up on that one, I will have to touch base with PD just because of the sensitivity of that situation.
Yeah.
But yes, there are, just so you all know, they are having community meetings, and I'll put all the commissioners on the invites, that's what everyone agreed to. Don't feel like you have to come, come to the group that you feel like you want to come to, or if you just don't have anything to do sometimes, come and attend. But right now the Latino Coalition is on the calendar for the second Wednesdays of the month. So that's where we were last night, Ovia and I. So we welcome the commissioners to attend those, just like any other outreach events that they do. And they'll be focusing on the Black community, the Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, we use NHPI for that. LGBTQ community as well as the refugee community, so those are upcoming. And any calendar invites I get, I will send that out to everybody, just so it's an open invite and. It, it's good to be in, you know, PD's world as well as.
Yeah.
They're in our world, so, and some are kind of in a mix of both, so yes. Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, perfect, is there a second? I'm sure everyone's second. Okay, so the meeting ends right at seven, perfect. Thank you, everybody.